I'd like to call to order the March 19th, 2007 regular meeting of the Salina City Commission to order with the clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Commissioner Devine.
Here.
Commissioner Jelka.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
Commissioner Vanier.
Here.
Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the citizens forum, as time set aside for any citizen that would like to address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda today. Are there any citizens that would like to address the commission? Please come forward, give us your name and your address.
My name's Georgianne Cathery and I live at 205 North 13th. I would like to open discussion on the Salina Housing Authority. I was very interested to read the Salina Journal and the series of five articles. I am very concerned as a taxpayer, although it's federal money, concerned as a taxpayer what we are paying the director of housing authority. I assume she was hired by the board that was -- how was she hired? I have a question on that.
She's hired by the housing authority board.
Right, and who appoints the board?
The board is appointed through the expression of interest forms that are filed by the -- to the city, and the mayor appoints the board members as their terms expire or as a vacancy comes up on the board.
Okay, so basically, the commissioners get applications for board members and then they choose who is on the board, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I wonder why the commissioner liaison is not allowed to be in the executive sessions of the housing authority.
That is not something that we as a city commission can address today. If you have questions about that, you can address them to the city manager and he can help you with that.
Oh, okay. Are there concerns by the board of the salary that Ann Rollins receives?
We as a commission have not discussed that, and that's not on our agenda today.
Will that be open for discussion in any meetings in the future?
It's not on our agenda today.
Yes, but will it be on your agenda in the future?
I have not seen it on the agenda planner for the future at this point.
Oh, okay. I just don't know if there are any others here that have concerns about that. I don't know what her qualifications were. I did work with her for 10 years at SRS. I don't recall that she worked down in the trenches with the rest of us, working with the families. I worked in child family services for 10 years, worked with the families that reside in -- many of the families I worked with did live in housing authority houses. I believe she was an ombudsman at SRS when I was there for 10 years. I don't know quite what she did. I don't think she supervised anyone, and yet she's supervising 11 and 1/2 employees. I just think it's a -- I would like to say it's a slap in the face to the taxpayers and also to the clients of the housing authority. That's all I have to say, and I hope that you will put on the agenda at a future meeting, this concern.
Thank you for your concern that you brought to us.
Thank you.
Any other public comments, public questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, public hearing on petition number 4292 requesting the vacation of North Third Street right-of-way from Iron Avenue to the Smoky Hill River. Sub item 5.1A, first reading ordinance number 07-10,378.
Staff report, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you. Mayor and commissioners, this is an application for vacation of North Third Street. You have before you a petition that's been signed by representatives of the Salina Community Theater Association, the St. Francis Academy, owners on the east side of the street, and the city manager on behalf of the city of Salina for the community theater site itself and parking lots located to the north. That action was authorized and discussed at your February 14th meeting. Situation is that North Third Street is platted from Iron up to the Smoky Hill River. That plat of that street dates back to the original town site of Salina. The original dimensions on that were 80 feet of right-of-way back in 1990. The west 15 feet of that street right-of-way adjacent to the theater itself was vacated essentially to adjust the property line and to allow for some theater expansion that occurred at that time. That does not and is not reflected on the maps that you have in front of you because for some reason the county's parcel maps did not pick up that 15-foot vacation. The city of Salina currently owns the land that the theater sits on as well as what's commonly referred to as Founder's Park that runs along the Smoky Hill River, as well as parking lots that exist on the east side of North Third Street. We've had discussions with the community theater about expansion plans. They first plan to extend in what is today the right-of-way for North Third Street and with a future expansion would probably span what is the existing street and move on to the property on the other side. Once they got to that point, they would be getting into an area occupied by Westar power lines and looking at some sort of new entryway onto Iron Avenue. But this initial request for vacating the street is to create a situation whereby the property that the community theater occupies, as well as a portion of vacated right-of-way, could be transferred to them as owners to assist them in their grant fundraising. The idea that we have at this stage would be after vacation of the street right-of-way, a resolution of intent that would indicate the city's intent to transfer, but no actual transfer would occur until they're ready to proceed with their expansion plans. We did send this out for review both internally and to our franchise utility providers. The two items of concern were preservation of public access in the interim period to get to the parking lots and Founder's Park, and also Westar has a very major set of power lines that goes through there. We think that the vacation ordinance that's been crafted for your consideration addresses the preservation of access by retaining an access easement and city maintenance responsibility for that roadway and attempts to address Westar's concern by preserving a 25-foot utility easement along the east side of the street. It's our recommendation that you approve this vacation ordinance on first reading today. It would vacate the remaining right-of-way for North Third Street between Iron and the Smoky Hill River, but it would retain an access easement for public travel and also retain a utility easement for Westar. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions. As to the future resolution of intent or other agreements, I would defer those to Mr. Bankston.
Questions of staff on the staff report before opening up the public hearing. Seeing that I'll open this up as a public hearing, anybody in the public who has a comments concerning the petition that's been filed, it's your opportunity to speak. Seeing that I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Mars, I did have one question. I guess I'm a little confused. We're retaining the existing Third Street roadway as public access easement, but we're vacating the right-of-way easement. So what is the effect of?
The effect would be that on vacation, full vacation of that right-of-way, there would be no initial effect except for on the east side of the street, ownership of the east half of that street would go to the Community Theater Association and to St. Francis Academy. So this access easement ensures that even though that will be privately owned after this action, that the public will still have the right of ingress and egress on that roadway, and we'll have an agreement that indicates that the city will still maintain that.
Okay.
That allows the underlying ownership to change.
And this is what the theater wishes for their construction projects?
And for -- to be eligible for certain types of grants.
For certain, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Is there a motion concerning the first reading on the ordinance?
Mayor Mars, I move approval on first reading of ordinance number 07-10,378.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance number 07-10378. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item is the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 5th, 2007. Item 6.2, approve purchases of the downtown amenities upgrade and refurbished project number 07-2639 from site scapes in the amount of $29,950. Item 6.3, acceptance of dedicated right-of-way for Progress Drive and additional right-of-way in the corrected plat of the Liberty Edition number two. Item 6.4, authorized purchase of a GPS system from Laser Specialists Incorporated in the amount of $63,567. Item 6.5, award of contract for the 2007 joint and crack ceiling project number 07-1622 to Missouri Pavement Maintenance in the amount of $47,836.20. Item 6.6, award of contract for the 2007 latex modified slurry sill project number 07-1623 to Baloo Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $204,317.50. Item 6.7, resolution number 07-6375 authorizing the license agreement with Kansas Gas Service.
Are there any items that any commission would like to have pulled from the consent Is there a motion for approval?
Mayor Mars, I'd move the consent agenda be approved as submitted.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item is development business.
Item 7.1, application number Z07-1 requesting amendment to section 42-59 by adding temporary quarters for emergency service providers and responders as permitted temporary use. Sub item 7.1A, first reading ordinance number 07-10,380.
Staff report, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and commissioners, this is an application for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that was initiated by the Salina City Planning Commission after discussions with staff. We took to them some concerns we had about a gap or weakness that we had in our current ordinance that didn't really provide for situations where you might have an emergency service provider or responder that had to maintain a continuity of operations but might need to be housed temporarily in some form of a temporary structure, either while some renovations were being made or while a permanent facility for that responder was being built. A concrete example that could have occurred but did not because of the circumstances was the renovations of Fire Station number two where there was a house that the city had purchased that was available, and while remodeling took place, fire station crews were housed in that dwelling. If that situation had not been there, where that home was there and available, there may have been a need to bring in a manufactured or modular home temporarily to house those crew members. And our current building code requires that all permanent structures be designed to meet the building code. By definition, manufactured homes do not meet that code, and on a permanent basis, the only place they can be located is in a licensed manufactured home park. So this would carve out an exception and allow that to occur on a temporary basis where there was a need to house people and to maintain that level of service for emergency responders. What it's not intended to do is open that up for every type of construction project. In other words, not to allow someone to buy a vacant lot, put a mobile home on it and live in it while they're building a house. So this text amendment is limited to quarters for emergency providers and responders as proposed. This was discussed by the planning commission at their March 6th meeting, and they voted seven to zero to recommend that this provision be added to the temporary use section of the zoning ordinance. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Questions of staff.
In the definition of emergency services to the general public says included but not limited to fire department, ambulance, and law enforcement. So is that broad enough that if there were, say, a major flood or tornado and there was a need for a temporary office for an agency like FEMA, that their temporary office could be housed in a modular house like this?
FEMA or National Guard.
National Guards.
That would be another example, I think, that you would want to allow for.
Okay.
It's hard to draft it in a way that accomplishes every single conceivable user, but that's kind of why the included but not limited to language is used to give some discretion for those types. That's what it's intended to allow.
Yeah, that's -- I was just trying to get assurance that that was pretty flexible for any kind of an agency that would be aiding in case of an emergency. Okay.
Other questions of staff? Any public comments? Seeing that I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 07-10,380, as recommended by the city planning commission, be approved on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance 07-10380. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item.
Item 7.2, application number Z07-3 requesting a change in zoning district classification from C3 to C5 district on property addressed as 1513 South Ninth Street. Sub item 7.2A, first reading ordinance number 07-10,379.
Staff report, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and commissioners, this is an application for a change in zoning district classification. The property that is the subject of this application is the former Sinclair Station site. It's located at the northeast corner of Ninth Street and Claflin Avenue. It's our understanding that this property was purchased by Kansas Wesleyan University shortly after the service station was permanently closed, and they have been approached or desire to lease the property to the applicant who operates a automobile sales business known as Fastlane Auto Sports. This property is zone C3 Shopping Center District, which does not permit the outdoor display or sale of merchandise for items such as vehicles or trucks or boats or things of that nature. So the applicant has filed this request to change the zoning district classification of the property in order to lease it for his auto sales business. Property has about 120 feet of frontage on Ninth Street and about 110 feet of frontage available for display on Claflin and is currently unoccupied. There haven't been any major structural changes posed for the site. Since the day of the planning commission hearing to today, they have since removed the underground tanks from the property, removed a great deal of paving and put paving back, even paving areas that weren't paved at the time that the planning commission reviewed this. There is a distinction between the C3 and C5 zoning, and that has mostly to do with the intensity of the uses as well as the outdoor display aspects that C5 allows. The applicant believes there's sufficient room here for him to display vehicles and still provide maneuverable access, plans to use the bays and existing service station to service and help maintain vehicles for display. All the vehicle display areas would need to be paved, or they could not be used for vehicle display. This section of the Ninth Street corridor is kind of a mixed bag. It is predominantly zone C3. There are a number of residential-type uses on the east side of Ninth Street. As you get away from Ninth Street on either side, the area is mostly residential. The only exceptions to the existing C3 pattern is what was the former TSC store that's located at the northwest corner of the intersection. And if you're familiar with the Mid-Kansas Tools location, that was approved several years ago for a planned C5 zoning for an outdoor display area for mowers and front yard landscaping. Those are really the only C5 exceptions that have outdoor display in this particular corridor. The remaining properties are C3. I think the only concern that was expressed is whether, once you approve C5, whether you're making that a trend or setting a precedent for future requests. It's not clear whether that would be the case or those would be coming forward. I think we're all aware that this section of Ninth Street and this intersection tends to be congested, so it may not be suitable for all types of C5-type uses. There should be no change in the demand for public utilities and services. The comprehensive plan shows this as a commercial corner, so it's a matter simply of what uses are allowed. Planning Commission held a hearing on this on March 6th, 2007. They voted to recommend a change to planned C5 zoning. Would open up the site to automobile display and sales, but limit it in the future to that and all other C3 uses, but not opening it up to all C5 uses. They recommended that signage and other regulations be subject to C3 requirements. They also had a third condition, that the grassy area located east of the building not be used for storage or display of vehicles. Since they made that recommendation, that area has been paved. And so if you refer to the site plan, I think that you have in your packet, there's an area on that site plan along Claflin that shows as grass area, and that area has now been paved. So conceivably in your action today, you could modify that to allow that area that has since been paved to be used for display, but the intent of the planning commission at the time was not to make clear that that grassy area wasn't to be used for display. So that recommendation comes to you from the planning commission, and the attached ordinance is drafted based on that recommendation. So if you concur with that, the attached ordinance should be approved on first reading today.
Questions of staff? Go ahead.
Do we have any requirements for landscaping on PC5?
We do not unless you are completely leveling the site and starting over, similar to what was done with the subway at Crawford and Ohio. But if you leave the building intact and you're not making any physical changes or additions, there is not a requirement that you retrofit a site with landscaping.
On your zoning map that was part of our packet, you show this C3 property outlined, and then there's a square around it that covers -- that goes up three or four properties in south, and it doesn't have a classification in it. Does that all C3 now as well?
That area directly to the north?
Yes.
Yes, that boundary should extend up to north of the alley at Kerwin. That's actually Bogies right there, and the dividing line is the alley north of Bogies.
As I recall, several, it's been probably a year or two ago, Kansas Wesleyan was before us with a request for some change in use of some of these lots around here for some residential use or some parking issue, I recall.
It was a parking lot.
For parking for some of the houses that they were renting in this area?
And for some student parking, yes. That was at the northwest corner of Claflin and Highland. That would be just to the east of this site.
So how much of this do -- does the Kansas Wesleyan own of this particular block that's -- that Highland and Ninth?
I think it has gradually increased over time. I think they own, they're acquiring or aiming to acquire most of the block between Ninth, Claflin, Cloud, and Highland. I can't give you an exact percentage of how many of those they own, but they are the majority owner at this point of that particular block. And then they do own property on the west side of Highland between Kerwin and Claflin.
Other questions of staff?
He's not going to be allowed to do oil changes and service work to vehicles, is he? Is that part of this?
You made the comment in your presentation that the building was not going to change to allow him to do service work.
His primary goal is to use the lifts and the service station to do detail work or maintenance on his own cars. I think that would be a change if he went into the automobile service business, because then we'd be looking at different parking requirements and other things. So it's our understanding that that would be a change from what he's proposed.
In the long term, has Kansas Wesleyan given you any indication as far as what their desire would be as far as zoning of this area that they're working on acquiring?
I think we've had some discussions previously at steady sessions, and as items have come up, that it might be desirable if they went through a similar exercise that the Regional Health Center did and look at kind of have a neighborhood plan or sub-area plan for their campus and surroundings and to get some indication. I know there's been some discussions about, you know, having a true gateway to the campus from Ninth Street, but we've not seen anything or had any further discussions about master planning their area. That could be a future sub-part of the community comprehensive plan, or that could be done as a separate exercise working with them as was done with the Regional Health Center.
I just have a hard time just rezoning this so that they can satisfy a potential tenant that wants to rent it. Any other questions of staff?
The recommendation from the planning commission, do I understand their -- one of their conditions is that only automobile sales will be allowed at this location? And I know you set up here under C5, you can boat sales, car washes, RV rental, truck sales, and automobile sales.
Well, historically, we have treated automobile sales and, let's say, standard-sized truck sales to be synonymous with each other. I think if you -- it would not be intended to allow the larger trucks or those type of vehicles, but that could be clarified to say automobiles and light trucks or whatever would be.
But things like boats and recreational vehicles and things like that.
The intent would be it would not open it up for that. It would be automobiles and light trucks.
Other questions of staff?
I'm slightly curious why we're going to PC5 instead of just, can't we just add the use to three and make it a PC3 and not change the underlying zoning?
You can always be restrictive, but you can't in C3 introduce a use that's not already allowed there.
Okay.
So we can make it PC5 and be more restrictive, but we can't take a use that's allowed in a lower zone and bring it down to a lower one.
Okay, so it's kind of a, just a tactic. Okay, so it's kind of a, just a technicality, but we're really making this a PC3 plus?
Right. We're trying to keep it as much as C3 as possible.
Okay.
Other questions of staff?
Sorry, I didn't think of that.
Any public comments? Please come to the podium, give us your name and address.
Mike Grabner at 602 Starlight Drive. I just wanted to comment that I visited with Wayne Schneider and Darrell Victory of Kansas Wesleyan. They have no future plans from Claflin on north to do anything with the university. They said they just wanted to acquire all that property back, because that was part of my concern also. And another comment I wanted to make, when that was a Sinclair Station, it also was a full-service repair shop known as Bergerson Service. So they were working on cars there.
Is that your intent now?
Just to work on my own personal cars.
So how will you dispose of the oil? If you're changing oil and that sort of thing?
I don't have any plans at all to change oil.
Other comments?
That's it.
Thank you. The other public comments? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission. Other discussion?
Mayor Mars, I concur with your comments about the need for a neighborhood plan for the Kansas Wesleyan area, and I'm very reluctant to approve this rezoning request because of that.
Other comments?
I would share the same sentiment.
Is there a motion then?
Well, I was a little concerned that since our Planning Commission has spent a great deal of time, or at least the normal amount of time, discussing this and has come up with a recommendation for this compromise, and that it is essentially the same as was done for the equipment company across the street, that it's not that critical a change in the neighborhood and there are not really that many negatives. We still will need to, it would still have to be rezoned when Kansas Wesleyan finally decides what they want to do with the property.
My only comment to that is the Planning Commission is required to do Planning Commission work. We represent the entire citizenry, and it's our obligation to understand that.
Just to get it off dead center, I'll make a motion for the approval of ordinance 0710379.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading, ordinance 0710379. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails 3-0 with Commissioner Devine, Commissioner Jolka, and Mayor Mars descending. Next item is administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 0710,377, annexing city-owned property located north and west of the North Ohio Overpass.
Staff report. I guess this is second reading.
My job to do this, I guess. Question or request for guidance would be if the commission wishes us to follow up with initiating the annexation of the remaining Beverly tract. If you'll recall, with the annexation of this north roadway, it leaves a piece of property that was part of the original Beverly tract that's part in the city and part out of the city. With this action, it would be surrounded by the city on all four sides. So it would be a property that we could initiate the annexation of, but we wouldn't do that without your direction, that you'd like to see that as a follow-up action.
But it can't be built on until it's platted?
Yeah, it can't be built on until it's platted. So although it's zoned in the county, they can't build on it until they plat it and bring it into the cities.
Okay. This ordinance was passed on first reading on March 5, and since that time, no comments have been received. Is there a motion for approval on second reading?
Mayor Mars, I would move for approval of ordinance 0710377 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, ordinance 0710377 on second reading. Would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Devine?
Aye.
Commissioner Jolka?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Next item.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 0710,376, requesting the vacation of an alley right-of-way located in Elm Grove addition.
This ordinance was passed on first reading on March 5, 2007, and since that time, no comments have been received from any abutting property owners.
Mayor Mars, when I made my motion to approve on first reading, it was subject to the applicant obtaining a license and having a plan in the city's offices for screening. Has those, have those two items been accomplished?
Those items have not been accomplished, and we've tried to, in some ways, separate the two issues and deal with them individually. The alley vacation, dealing with whether there's a need to maintain that alley, and continuing to work with Mr. Bohm and the state of Kansas on clarifying everything related to the junkyard operation there. I might let Mr. Bankston speak to the two issues.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, if I may, and I'll start with a question from Mr. Andrew, just to be sure that we're clear. Am I correct, Mr. Andrew, that the analysis between first and second reading led to the conclusion that we do have a pre-existing use, but that the expansion as anticipated originally will not occur as initially anticipated when the application was made?
I believe that to be the case, that what we're trying to clarify is what is permitted there is the historical junkyard within the boundaries that it occupied. Historically, there are other issues that arise when you establish a new or expanded junkyard. And so that's the part that we're dealing with. The other deficiencies deal with the fact that at present, we have no screening fence along State Street, and we have to have an agreed-upon location and design for that before it's installed. And then the other aspect is that the storage regulations for junkyards in the city require that they be enclosed by a perimeter fence, but that be buffered on the outside by landscaping that consists of evergreen bushes or trees. And we do not have that in place or a plan for that at this time.
So if we postpone this ordinance on second reading until some of those things have taken place, are we causing any problems by doing that?
Commissioners, let me, if I can, we really have a couple of issues. One, since the motion was made, we went back and looked, because there are certain motions that you can, you can put stipulations on, and there are certain ones that you can. And that's one thing the city attorney wanted to look at to clarify. So we have that question, which the city attorney will address. Then we have the separate question of basically our zoning code and not meshing very well with these types of uses, and the need to look at that, and also to reconcile our code with the state licensing. And so I'm going to turn it over to Greg to talk a little about the question of the motion itself, and then bring back the other issue.
Okay.
The first point having to do with the vacation action, and as you know from this ordinance and others, when you consider that matter, it is, it's essentially a question of whether there remains a public use for either the right-of-way or easement or whatever the case might be, and whether there continues to be a public purpose served by maintaining that easement or right-of-way. If not, then that's what, that's the factual basis for the vacation. I understood Commissioner Devine's concerns, and that obviously went with the action that was taken. And that was my point. The point of my question for Mr. Andrew, I think factually, we had a change in terms of, at least what I understood to be the scope of the anticipated potential use of the property in a way that touched, for lack of a better term, the vacated portion. Is that a fair statement, Commissioner, as far as, it related to the expansion of the use over to the area of the vacation?
The vacation, yes.
Right. So we had two developments. One, the concern of making sure that we were looking strictly at the public use aspect of the vacated area, but also the fact that we had kind of a drawing back, if you will, of the expansion, at least given current circumstances. And unless, it was my understanding, and again, I'm looking at Mr. Andrew to correct me if I'm wrong, that unless and until there was a change in circumstances, there would not be the expansion of the use to the vacated area.
Okay, so what we're dealing with here is a vacation.
Right.
And because the vacation has some relationship to this junkyard that is not currently licensed, we've had some overlap in whether or not they were actually related. That's background information.
Correct.
To the vacation, but it really doesn't affect the vacation.
Correct.
Unless, of course, the easement would serve a public good in restricting the amount of junkyard area that we have in the community.
Okay.
Just for clarification, Dean, the area in which they are requesting the expansion, according to your review, is not zoned for that expansion. Therefore, unless there's a change in the zoning, they would never make it over to the area that's being vacated. Is that correct?
That's correct. The way I've, according to the research of how it got there, how it was legally allowed prior to our current zoning ordinance being in effect, the predecessor zoning district allowed automobile graveyards as a permitted use, and this was established in 1968. Subsequent to that, that was removed as a permitted use in I-2, and it's only allowed in I-3, although our terminology and our definitions that we have to work with are very weak. So there would have to be a change in zoning classification for the expansion area to be licensed as a junkyard, and until that took place, the expansion could not be signed off on.
So what that means then is whether you grant the vacation or not, it doesn't, at this point, it doesn't have any impact at all as to whether that junkyard can expand over to that area where the vacation is requested.
So they don't really need the vacation anymore if they're not going to expand? So actually, we might say that this is a moot point and just deny the ordinance and go on from here.
I think it's arguable, but I think our position would be that today, they don't need the vacation. Now, if other actions would occur possibly in the future, but then I think that brings back the question of whether the vacation action is still in order, and I'm going to have Greg go ahead and address that specifically.
On the other side of this, seems to look like this is a 12-foot wide alley that no one is using, so there's no point in retaining it regardless of its future use. And the most effect it would have on this junkyard is that they'd be six feet wider on their eastern property line, but they have a 15-foot utility easement that's not going away. They would eventually have a requirement for a fence that's set back from their property line. They'd have to work that fence in so that it's not in the utility easement, so it doesn't get torn down by the power company during maintenance. So I don't, I don't see how retaining this alley does the general public any good, and I don't see how vacating it really makes a dramatic effect on the junkyard. So we might as well do it just to clear it off.
Unless you consider it a buffer between the residential property adjoining the easement.
Six feet.
I know.
It's almost invisible.
Commissioners, Deputy Managers, Greg reminded me that there may be some benefit to Mr. Wilson. We were talking about Mr. Bohm. There may be some benefit to Mr. Wilson. I don't know that he's here to address that, but I think with that, I'm going to go ahead and defer to Greg to kind of address the question of, okay, you have a, in essence, a junkyard expansion request. There was a vacation involved. Things have changed. We don't believe that the vacation, or the expansion can happen today under these rules. There may or may not be a need for the vacation. And then the final question is, is because of, when you put all that together, is the vacation in order or not as an action? And I'm going to let Greg go ahead and address that question.
Well, I think you've generally identified the issue, and that is whether there is a public purpose served by the retention of the, what I understand to be alleyway. Am I correct?
Yes, it's a platted alleyway. We are the underlying landowner today.
I think that's the question.
And the alternative, if we leave the alley there, and the property owners to the east wanted to have a developed alley for rear access to their lots, what would their procedure be to have that alley open so that they could drive down it and drive into their backyards? Isn't that possible?
That I'll defer to anyone who might wish. All I know is that I can't tell you how that happens.
I'm looking around the room.
They would have to improve the alley.
At their expense?
At their expense.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, physically, the land in question is kind of a drainage well currently.
Right. But there's no drainage easement in it for public drainage, right? So.
So regressing here to the first reading, the motion that was passed on first reading, which included these conditions, you're saying those conditions were not, could not legally be attached to this ordinance? Is that correct?
Shall I just withdraw my previous motion from the previous meeting, and that'll be the end of it?
Not that easy.
Well, certainly that would probably more readily be achieved by simply considering a motion without those conditions at this point in time would be the, I don't know that it's necessary for you to rescind the prior motion.
So do you feel that that's in order?
A motion now that would not be conditioned as the first reading motion?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I think that's, with the notice and the opportunity to consider this on second reading, I think that would be an appropriate motion, yes.
And so if we make that motion and prove it on first reading at this meeting, the second reading of this ordinance would occur at our next meeting?
No, I believe the second reading could stand as the motion would be made today.
Okay, all right.
What about this moratorium that staff is going to be preparing moratorium language for? Did that happen?
Commissioners, we don't have language for you. I do want to address that real quick, and just to say that we haven't had a new junkyard or automobile graveyard or salvage, however you want to characterize the different uses that are similar since, for about 40 years. And as a result, there hasn't been a lot of attention paid to our zoning code as it relates to these types of uses. Given with this one coming about, we did take a close look at that, and that's where we found we believe our zoning code needs some work. We need to reconcile better with state licensing. We also have gaps, and when we looked into our strategic plan, we didn't really feel that expansion of this use, this type of use, or for that matter, there's a question as to whether even new locations for this type of use would possibly meet that. And that's certainly something that you would need to decide. So what we basically said is we need to look at our zoning code, we need to update it and figure out where we need to go. And then that led to the question of, do we just do that? Is that something the commission would like us to do or not? And if you say, yes, it is something we'd like staff to do, is the question, we wanted to give you the opportunity that if you chose to, in order to not allow a gap time possibly in which you could see an expansion, and I don't know that we anticipate a new junkyard or salvage yard, but possibly an expansion, possibly a new, the commission does have the option of placing a moratorium, and we felt if you chose to do that, 90 days should be sufficient to do whatever we would need to do. That's certainly an option that you have, based on what you might see as the possibility that something could slip in in that timeframe.
Is this ultimately a local or a state license?
It's a state license, and Mr. Andrew could probably tell you a little bit more about what they actually look at in that licensing.
Yeah, there's, it's in the legislation that deals with highway beautification, but it's called the Salvage and Junkyard Control Act. And there's actually state legislation and licensing involved, but they will not issue a license unless the local zoning official certifies that the proposed location and the conditions of that location comply with all the local zoning requirements. What they did in this case is they issued a license for the pre-existing junkyard. And then I think it occurred to them, or they got the additional information, that now the physical area that was going to be covered by now the physical area that was going to be covered by the expanded junkyard, they were not aware, and they had not issued a license for that, and they won't unless local zoning officials say that that area is conforming. So that's kind of where we're at now, is that they have delivered a form for us to review and determine whether we would sign off from a zoning standpoint on the expanded area. Looking at past precedent since 1977, we have not signed off on new or expanded salvage yards in I-2 districts that requires I-3 zoning. That's the only place where it's allowed. That's still somewhat of a concern, that it's a permitted use anywhere and not subject to some conditional use permit review. But where we're at now is that I don't think we are prepared to sign off on that under the present zoning regulations. But at the same time, in doing all the research and looking at their terminology and ours and lists of uses, there's a lot of work that could be done in our zoning ordinance to clarify and improve and give us a better handle on these types of uses.
We have a number of items to deal with. First of all, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 0710376 on first reading?
That's already approved on first reading. The motion should be to.
Not without conditions.
Approve it on second reading, deleting the special conditions that were contained in the first reading.
Yes, that was what I was anticipating.
That's what you were anticipating?
Yes.
That type of motion?
That the second reading, that we were ready for second reading, in whatever form you might wish to make that. So I so move what I just said.
Okay. Second. So it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 10710376 on second reading, removing the special conditions that were attached to it on first reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Devine?
No.
Commissioner Jolka?
No.
Commissioner Perny?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Motion carries 3-2 with Commissioner Devine and Commissioner Jolka descending.
Mayor Jolka, excuse me, Mayor Mars, I'm anticipating here. I'd like to direct, request that the staff be directed to develop the necessary moratorium language so that this junkyard situation can be fully taken care of, so that we don't have this proliferation of both legal and illegal junkyards throughout this community.
I would agree with that, whether it's a motion or not.
I also move that.
Commissioners, before you move forward with that, in order to avoid any gap, if you wanted to have an action that's basically effective today, the city attorney can provide you with language that ensures there's not a gap between now and the time that you actually formally approve an ordinance to that fashion.
And actually, I think the motion that you've made will be fine. What I would ask is that the clerk note that with your consent that we invoke what is referred to as the pending legislation doctrine, that would simply make it clear that no applications would be received, that would be potentially attempting to seek any permitting or licensing in conflict with the temporary moratorium.
I would add that to my motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the moratorium be placed on the junkyard licensing with clarifications as so defined by the city attorney. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Next item.
Item 8.3, award contract for cellular telephone service.
Staff report, Mr. Frans.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. City provides selected employees, currently about 56, with cellular telephones for business use. Current contract was entered into in 2004 with Cellular One. Since that time, Cellular One has been acquired by U.S. Cellular. Configuration of our plan has changed. Industry has changed, and we therefore submitted proposals from several different vendors. We've received five proposals for plans from four vendors. Results this year were a great deal more competitive, that is, they were much, much more closely spaced, with three of the five vendors being within a few hundred dollars per year of each other. I have attached a much more detailed staff report. Essentially, the recommendation is that the, we award the bid to U.S. Cellular once again. Would note that the dollar amount of difference between U.S. Cellular and the nearest competition, at least in dollar terms, was $5.64 per year. So it was very, very close. The plans are all somewhat different from each other, but I believe that, you know, all three of those, those bottom three plans would meet our need. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. I do believe we do have at least one representative here, maybe more from the vendors.
Questions of staff.
The court doesn't say, how much of an increase is this over the former service?
The former contract cost us approximately $1,842 per line, per month. This is $24.99.
Is this just primarily for local use?
Nearly all of our uses is within Salina and its immediate environs. We have virtually no roaming, we have virtually no long distance.
So that's a 25% increase, but.
That's correct.
Or 30%, depending on which way you go. I guess it's almost more like a 30% increase. But all the other competitors are in that same realm.
Yes. And I would say that when we did the bids last time, the Cellular One bid was a great deal lower than the competitors' bids at that time. We had a good bargain last time.
Okay.
Actually, we've had a bargain for a number of years.
How do you monitor or manage business use only?
The monthly bills are distributed to departments, and we do audit them occasionally to make, to ensure that it appears that it's business use. You know, clearly, that, you know, you can never be 100% sure, but we make it very clear that's the intent, and we do monitor the monthly bills.
Commissioners, I can, let me expand on that just a little, too. If you look in our personnel manual, it's a little bit too flexible from the personal use perspective. It allows a little bit of an out, but what we've done is, we've, we're going to bring that back with the personnel manual changes to tighten that up. But we've created an allowance program, and right now, the allowance is equal to what, in essence, would be the base cost of this. And allowance, the purpose of that is, we have a choice, if you're an employee. First of all, you have to meet the same standard for either one, that you have a business necessity for a phone. So that's one thing that's clear. And our expectation is, is the total number, whether it be allowances or phones issued, does not dramatically change from what it is today. So that's another thing we're looking at. But what the allowance does is, it provides a few benefits. One, we don't get caught in any overages, roamings, or anything like that, any extra fees, so it gives us a little protection there. It does give that employee who doesn't want to carry two phones that option of not carrying two phones, and getting involved with the issues of tracking every possible minute in order to deal with IRS income taxes and so forth. So it helps us with our taxability issue, and with that option, it also then makes it even that much easier when we administratively tighten down the rules on the use of the city-issued phone, so we don't get into that. So we think that that gives us the way to balance this need and keep our costs in line and not get into IRS tax issues.
So does an employee have the option to use their own phone and be reimbursed for the amount that the city would pay if they had a phone?
Yes. Yeah, they do, and I believe that's set at 25.
Well, it's set at $25. Now, there are 56 phones currently on the city-provided plan. I believe we have about 34, 35 people who get allowances.
That's pretty consistent in total with what we've had for the last probably four or five years. It's not really changed much.
That is one difference between now and the old plan, is the old plan had about 90 lines on it, and it's now a considerably smaller plan.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Thank you. Are there any public comments? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Mars, I move we award the contract for cellular telephone service to U.S. Cellular in the amount of $16,793.28 per year base cost.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to award the contract for cellular phone service to U.S. Cellular. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Next item.
Item 8.4, award contract for the landscaping portion of the KDOT transportation enhancement project.
Mr. Place, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. On November 8th of 2004, the city of Salina submitted a grant funding application to the Kansas Department of Transportation for transportation enhancements for our two entryway corridors. These corridors are from I-70 on Ninth Street South to Crawford, and then also on Crawford Street from city limit to city limit on the east and west side. On May 17th of 2005, KDOT awarded the city of Salina a transportation grant with 50/50 cost sharing for a total project cost of $413,000. This transportation enhancement grant awarded includes approximately $300,000 for the installation of landscaping and related type items. These enhancements would be located around the intersection of Ninth and I-70, in the area of the, outside the area of the new ramps, where the old ramps used to be, and then also at Crawford and I-135, along those ramps as well. I have had some discussion with Lee Holmes, with KDOT. They will need to approve anything that we do on KDOT right-of-way, but he said he didn't see it being a real big issue. He has more concern with some of our wayfinding signs that we're going to be locating in the area. And this project is also a part of the wayfinding signage project that we've talked about Patty Banks Associates was selected using city guidelines. The proposed scope and fee attached to your packet lists all elements of the project we requested, as well as their proposed fee. This proposed fee to complete their design is $18,044.20. If approved, the cost for this contract will be financed through the city's 2007 capital improvements program. The engineering division of Public Works recommends that the city commission approve the contract with Patty Banks Associates for landscaping design of the Salina streetscape and entryway enhancement project in the amount of $18,044.20. I'd be happy at this time to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of staff.
The specific median islands on North Ninth Street, do those begin then at the south side of the recently installed orange decorative lighting?
Correct. And they go south to Euclid, and that's where the median enhancements in that area would stop.
And there's nothing north of those lighting fixtures, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions of staff?
This is not part of this contract, but I do believe we had spoken with KDOT about wildflower plantings in the berm areas adjoining the ramps, which wouldn't be paid for out of this project, but would be a part of the project, just so we're clear, that they would do the wildflower seeding for us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Mars, I move approval of the contract for the landscaping portion of the transportation enhancement project, KDOT Project 85 TE027702, and City Project Number 051550 to Patty Banks Associates in the amount of $18,044.20.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Project Number 051550 and award a contract to Patty Banks and Associates at a total contract amount of $18,044.20. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 5-0.
A quick question. On the blue sheet, it's 027701, and on our agenda, it's 02.
That's the KDOT number.
Right.
One of them is wrong.
[laughing].
Please correct it accordingly. We will. Next item.
Item 8.5, first reading ordinance number 0710381, authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bond series 2007.
Mr. Bankston, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You may recall earlier, considering the resolution of intent on the proposed refunding industrial revenue bond issue for CASA Industrial Controls, that project has now progressed to the proposed ordinance that is before you. Because it is a refunding scenario, and because there is no change in the property tax exemption, it is not necessary for you to conduct a public hearing on the matter, and you can simply consider the ordinance. Mr. Mike Hague, president of CASA Industrial Controls, is also with us here today.
So is this consideration of this ordinance on first reading, and we have a second reading, or do we approve this ordinance just?
It is a first reading on this ordinance, yes.
Okay. Questions of staff? Any public comments? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Mars, I move we approve on first reading, ordinance 07-10381, authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds, series 2007, on behalf of CASA Industrial Controls.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading, ordinance number 0710381. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. So any other business that needs to be brought before the commission today?
Question, a clarification for me on item 8.1 about conserving the Beverly property. Did we encourage the staff to go ahead and work on annexation of the Beverly property?
No, we did not.
Okay. I wasn't sure that clear.
Yes, Commissioner, staff would request that you, that the city commissioners move to recess and enter into executive session for approximately 20 minutes to discuss matters subject to attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion would waive the privilege.
I will make that motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the city commission go into executive session for 20 minutes and resume in this room at 5:30. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. We're in executive session. Is there any anticipated action afterwards?
There's not.
No anticipated action afterwards. Thank you.